Welcome to all, to the regularly scheduled meeting of the Kingman City Council on today, December 21st, 2021. We will turn some time over to our city clerk, Annie Meredith.
I will do the roll call. Mayor Miles.
President.
Vice. Vice Mayor Watkins.
Here.
Councilmember Mello.
Here.
Councilmember Nelson.
Here.
Councilmember Samley.
Here.
Councilmember Scott Staley.
Present.
And Councilmember Walker. We have a quorum.
Thank you, Annie. I would invite you all to stand for the invocation and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance, and we'd like to welcome Pastor Jessica Cooper of the Hope City Church here tonight.
If we could all bow our heads, please. Father, we just thank you, Lord, for this evening, for this meeting. Father, we lift up every council member, every, every person that represents leadership here within the city that's in this meeting, Father. Father, we pray that they would work in unity, they would work together. Father, as we get ready going into this new year, Father, we pray for vision. Father, we pray that you will give them insight and you will give them new ideas, Lord, for our city, Father. That they would always keep in front of their minds, so that they are doing the work for the people, Lord, and that the decisions they make today are for the future generations. So, Father, we just pray over each and every one of them. We pray healing, health, and over their families, Lord. We pray your protection. And, Father, we pray peace over this meeting and unity within the city employees, Father, and the workers, Lord. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The council may go into executive session for legal counsel in accordance with ARS 38-431 to discuss any agenda item. The following items may be discussed, considered, and decisions made relating thereto. First, our call to the public. Clerk Meredith mentioned to me that we have no one online or has written a statement, and...
I do have one gentleman that just joined us, and he's going to fill out the form really quick, and I can get it to you.
Okay. We will wait for that to happen, and welcome him here to these proceedings.
Hello. My name is Gary Waters. I'm a resident of Kingman, Arizona. I'm here with my son, Roy Ansem Waters. I live down the street at 309 North 7th Street. Just, we read Katie Minor the other day, and we came across the article that there's supposedly some improvements for Hubs Park and Metcalf Park. It was Roy's idea to come down here. We play at these parks all the time. We think it'd be a great, great thing to actually improve the playground equipment there. There's already been some improvements in Metcalf we've seen, but just given the tourists we see at the park and just the fact that it's a shady place for kids to play, it'd be a great thing. Roy actually, he busted his tooth through his lip on Hubs Park once, on the older little ladder there. So, some of the equipment doesn't seem quite so safe at that park either. So, I'm all for you guys investing in it. I'll be paying for it. I live right next to it. So, I believe my son wanted to say something, too. Did you want to add to that, buddy?
Yeah.
What are you gonna say?
May I, please? May you, please, fix my...
You got it, bud?
Make a target.
All right. Good job, kiddo. Well, that's all we have to say right now, anyway.
Thank you, Mr. Waters. Of course, we would direct any attention to that to our city manager. So, move forward. Next, we have on our item number two, consent agenda. Are there any items in the consent agenda that need to be removed and discussed and set aside? Not remove, but...
Set aside. I'd like to ask for item C, playground equipments, to be pulled from the consent agenda.
Anybody else? Okay. Can I have a motion then approving on the consent agenda items A, B, and D through G with the exclusion of C?
Some of.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, thank you. Councilwoman Staley.
Yes, I pulled item C because I had some questions about the playground equipment that would go into Metcalf Park. I think that we kind of talked about it before, and Mr. Waters made a great point that there are a lot of tourists that visit those parks downtown. And so, I have seen in other cities where they have themed parks, especially where they have tourists come in, and we have a lot of great things that we could put in our park, like trains, a little mining station, horses, like all kinds of things. And so, I wanted to see what we could do to make Metcalf a themed park, to help attract tourists, bring their kids to stop, and then families to spend time downtown.
I think we certainly could look at theming. As Metcalf is a little bit unique in that it is small, and there's a lot of public events held there. So, we're kind of bound by the size of the playground. I know that the Parks and Rec folks, the commission, had looked at new playground equipment, and I know that one of the things that we're going to put in Metcalf Park is a climbing structure.
That's great.
I don't know that that's themed. It's the outdoor, I'd say it's the outdoor theme. But as we, as we look at new playground equipment, there's certainly opportunity to see what we could, you know, because there's, you know, rocking toys that could be, you know, a train, you know, that kind of thing. So, we certainly, as we look for improvements at certain parks, we certainly can, can look at how and what's available.
Okay.
We're really excited about the rock climbing.
I am really excited about the rock climbing.
So, I would say that Counselor Staley had sent Mike and I, hey, this, I saw this, this would be a great idea. So, Mike immediately did some research on it, and I know that's, that's what we're, one of the play items that we're going to put at Metcalf. And I think that, you know, with our outdoor come and hike and bike and stuff, that, you know, I don't know that we have a lot of rock climbing per se, but it certainly will be, it'll be certainly one of those things that's an attraction to Metcalf. That, again, the, the play area in Metcalf is a little bit unique, and the fact that we have so many really great event, community events there probably limits our ability to expand, but we certainly need to be smart about what goes in the play area itself. I know Rotary, Rotary Club has done a handicap swing, and they continue to do improvements there as well. But we, we certainly can look at, at what additional theming can happen there and, and other parks that are as part of Route 66 and as part of our trail system. We certainly can, can look at that as we move forward.
Great. I keep seeing Mike light up behind you.
Oh, is Mike trying to chime in on this? Go ahead, Mike.
No, you're doing fine. I don't, I don't have anything really to add. I mean, I think what you're saying is accurate. We have two, two climbing apparatuses going in there right now in this package that we're proposing. So, and I think it is a theme, kind of with White Cliffs wagon wheels being not too far down the street, and there are some areas there where rock climbing is a, a, a event that takes place.
Thank you. With that, I will make a motion that we approve item C, playground improvements.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Anybody opposed? Okay. Motion carries. Thank you. I wasn't gonna ask if there's any more comment on that, but we're probably fine, so. But I didn't want to know, you're fine. You're fine. You did bring up one thing. Actually, Mr. Waters brought it up, and since this is part of that discussion a little bit, safety factor. I'm sure, especially the newer toys, I'm sure, and these newer climbing things have those, address that issue.
Yes. Everything that we're purchasing, everything that goes into our parks, not only meets all required safety standards, but our team actually goes back on a regular weekly basis and checks all safety surfaces, bolts, nuts, tightened, and the equipments operating as, as required.
And check with the children playing, too, I'm sure.
I'm sure.
It's always a good thing. Okay, thank you, Manager Foggan. Okay, old business, item three. We have no old business. New business, item four, A, video service license ordinance, I guess.
That would be me, sir. This is less exciting than playground equipment. Basically, the state legislature had passed some legislation changing the, the process of how cable television systems are licensed in the state. The prior process was through a franchising agreement, which is an electoral process. The state changed it to a basic licensing agreement, which the language requires us to adopt this language and conform to their processes and standards. And that is what this is. The council has already approved the basic license agreement as well as the application. We did that about a year, maybe a year and a half ago.
Okay. Any discussion on this matter from council? Okay, without further discussion then. All those, well, do I hear a motion approving item A under new business?
I'll make that motion.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
We have a motion, we have a second. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Anybody opposed? Okay, motion carries. Department reports. We'll turn some time over to Manager Foggan to direct those discussions.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. It is, we have several, I think, very informative department reports tonight. The first one is, of course, our, the FAA land release update. I will just preface this by saying that we have been working on the land release for the last couple of years, and we were hoping to have the land release finished up by the end of this year, was what we had originally scheduled. That has changed, and so we wanted to give you an update on that. So, I've asked Doug, our airport manager, Doug Breckenridge, to give, give you a presentation. And we also have Mike Williams, who is our FAA district manager. I probably just demoted Mike. I apologize for that, Mike. But he's here also to share some information with the council as well. We wanted you to be well informed about what we've been doing and maybe where the, where our snag is and where we're headed. So, with that, Doug, please.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members, as Mr. Foggan has notified you that we are running a little bit behind, not so much, a little bit behind on this project. So, just give you a little bit insight and input on this project. As you are aware, we were looking at releasing 1,810 acres of land from federal obligation, south and east of the airport. It was identified through the Airport Master Plan that was updated earlier this year that this land would not be necessary for the airport to use in the future. Development would be best suited for other options. The FAA has agreed, and we started moving forward with the land release. The first part of that land release was a Section 163 determination, just for a little bit of reminder. 163 was the process for determining that the land is able or can be released from federal obligations and will not be held up to FAA regulations, and we'll be able to sell that land and allow it for further development. That began in July 2020, and over the past several months and year, we have met and complete major milestones. This includes biological resources studies, SHIPO studies, or State Historic Preservation Office studies, tribal. And in April 2021, we submitted the actual preliminary draft EA. This is a, just a draft that we sent over to the FAA Regional Office for them to review, assess, and then come back and provide with any comments, concerns, or changes that they wish to be made inside the project. Well, they did respond back with some changes and comments for the project, and our Kaufman Associates, who are consultants, worked with us and in partnership with FAA to start addressing these comments and concerns as soon as practical. We went through that and resubmitted in another draft EA, which was then sent to our Airports District, Regional Districts Office, and then forwarded over to the FAA legal team. It was supposed to be about a 30-day process, and it took a little bit longer than we expected. We finally received the, the legal information back in October, much longer than we anticipated. With that came the primary delay in the project. This is something, just to let you know, this is something new, well, really new for this amount of acres for airports and the FAA. And trying to get an idea of the scope of this project and what we're looking to move forward has not been done inside the nation. Usually, what you get is from the FAA is a little bit more detailed information regarding these land releases. Well, with this amount of land, you really can't determine who exactly is going to go into each spot, every single layout, every utility. But unfortunately, some individuals that have not been here to the city of Kingman, and we're trying to work with FAA, and even our district's office doing a good job of trying to convey this information, that this is a whole different setting. But we still receive some of these requests mentioned above. We received these back in late October, and we have been going through them, working with Kaufman team, speaking to the FAA, and trying to come up with solutions, dividing out these tasks, and determine how we could best overcome these, or answer these questions, these comments, and these changes per the request of the FAA. Now, please keep in mind, these are not exactly, are not the exact actual comments that came from FAA legal. These are actually interpretation given to, or that the regional office has developed, sent back to us, and has been communicating with us since. So, we have a better idea of exactly what they're wanting, requesting, what the scope is, giving us clarification so we could better determine how to take on these actual tasks. Well, with these tasks, a lot of these were very much more, how could I say, in-depth. They're requesting road grading, they're requesting utility layout plans, they were requesting code of covenants. And so, we took all this information, and we decided to go ahead. Hey, what is the next step to move forward? One step we're looking at moving forward is we're pushing forward another project. We were originally looking at doing a master development plan for the area that was supposed to start up immediately after the EA land release was done at the end of this month. So, we'll move that forward so we could begin the master development study and get this property start to develop and build and ready for sale. Well, we're pushing that forward, or we're starting that up right now, because this master development plan will assist with addressing a lot of these comments and questions from the FAA. We're gonna do our best with directing whoever actually wins that request for qualifications and saying, hey, these EA land release comments need to come first. Let's get this done. Let's get this done quickly, but let's get this done thoroughly and right. So, that is gonna be a main part in addressing these comments and getting this project moving forward. The second part of this is Staff and Kaufman is working with 404 and 401 permits and certifications. These permits and certifications is, comes from the Clearwater Act to make sure that we are not actually polluting our natural waterways that go out of Kingman into possibly rivers. Well, Kingman, mainly around the airport, we do not have any streams, lakes, rivers, or stormwater dishes that go into an actual navigable waterway of the United States. So, we're trying to reach out to the Army Corps of Engineers and get, obtain a permit from them that will exclude us from that, that will definitely help out and work with expediting the process. So, we're communicating with them, trying to get this moving along, hopefully get somebody assigned to us so we could get this addressed. Well, once we actually get all these comments addressed, we're gonna update the actual draft plan, and we're gonna submit it to the FAA. Here are some of the major milestones that will still be in front of us that we will need to address in estimated timeframes. But just going back over this, as we are working on the, updating the EA, we will be in communication with the EA, with the FAA. We will be providing them some of our thoughts on the changes, how to address these issues, so they could say possibly yea or nay beforehand. So, when we actually submit the final package to them for their legal and regional approval, it will be a lot faster, and we'll be highly less likely to receive any returned additional comments. So, that will assist us with moving this forward as soon as practical. But we have a FAA representative. You know what, there yet, do you have any questions for me at this time? Okay. We do have a FAA representative, Mike Williams. He is our Regional Districts Office Airport Manager. He will be speaking on behalf of the FAA.
And I, Doug, I did notice, too, that when I introduced myself to some of the members of the audience, I know we have people here from Kauf, representatives from Kaufman also.
Yes, we do have, sorry about that. We do have Matt Quit and Judy Kraus over here. So, if you have any more technical questions, please feel free to ask them. They'll be able to answer it to the best of their ability.
Okay, thanks. Mr. Williams.
Well, good evening, council members. Mr. Vice Mayor, thank you for having me this evening on a Christmas holiday weekend. It is nice to be here in Kingman. It would be a little warmer outside, maybe. But as, as Mr. Breckenridge said, my name is Mike Williams. I represent the Federal Aviation Administration Office of Airports. I manage our Airports District Office in Phoenix. And really, you know, I can appreciate the fact that changes in project schedule and having to pivot like this is not the news you are all hoping to receive for Christmas. But I can really give you a strong sense that we in the FAA are here as your partner. We are committed to continue working with the city in this process and finding a way to make this happen. We understand the big picture, vision, if you will, and the wisdom behind it. So, we remain committed to seeing this through. We've had a good, several conversations today, Mr. Foggan and his team, just on some, some strategy points and some, we think there's probably gonna be an opportunity to have some other members of my agency come visit your city in the next several months. So, we think that will be very helpful. So, again, I appreciate that this is not the news you wanted to hear, but we are committed to working with everyone. We are committed to seeing this through, so.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Williams from council? Mayor Miles, forgive me for not recognizing you earlier, that you're participating via Zoom. Do you have any questions also?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I really don't have questions at this time. I think it's clear that what this progress ahead is intended to be, and appreciate the FAA working with us and, and as partners to get through this. You're right, Mr. Williams, it's not the news we had hoped for, but we appreciate you being here and discussing this with us.
Happy holidays.
Mike, while you're up here, I think if you could, you know, one of the things that Mike and I have talked about off and on over the last couple of months is the, the difference in what we're asking the FAA to consider, and the size and scope of that is, in its entirety, is eclipsing some people's understanding. And one of the, I was just kind of hoping that Mike could explain what they're used to seeing versus what we're asking them to look at. See, I think that would help the council.
Yeah, and in this case, the city of Kingman is being a leader, although it may not really seem like you're leading it at the moment. In, in the general kind of world of airport development, what we experience a lot is smaller-sized projects that are very specific. For example, you know, someone proposes to construct an aircraft storage hangar, three to five acres. You know, we know the size, we know how tall, we know what's gonna go in it. It's very specific. 1,810 acres is, that's more acreage than Phoenix Sky Harbor has in total. So, to get people's minds wrapped around that, because people think you can't have that much excess property, that just can't exist. So, that's where, you know, the, the long storied history of the Kingman Airport comes into play, because it certainly was extremely larger than that in its infancy. And airports are evolutionary. So, we see this as kind of the next step, but it's a, it's a big ask for, for people to understand that, and particularly for those that haven't had the opportunity to come visit. So, we think that that'll be a good way, as we look into the new year, that we can do that, and that'll help the process.
Okay. Any other questions? Mr. Williams, thanks again for taking the time to come up here.
Pleasure.
And actually representing us because you're from Phoenix, which is, you know, in perspective, is a lot closer than someone a lot farther away. So, we appreciate that.
Number one sole purpose why our office was established. So, thank you very much.
Mr. Williams, I guess we do have one more question.
Oh, it's for the city manager.
Oh, city manager, okay. Thank you, Mr. Williams.
Obviously, I'm disappointed to hear this. I worked on the Airport Master Plan, and I've been a part of this process for a while. And I'm sorry to see that we've come this far, right before we're about to make a huge investment into that area and then have the brakes put on. So, what I'd like to ask is if we could please engage the DORM group. I think that our federal legislators, Gosar, Kelly, and Cinema, Cinema, excuse me, could probably just help support us with a project like this at the federal level. Thank you.
You will certainly talk to them.
And also try to get this presentation.
Yep, yep, absolutely.
Okay. If there are no other comments about item A, item B, Rancho Santa Fe update. Manager Foggan.
I have to say.
All right. A couple of council meetings ago, Counselor Samley had asked for a Rancho Santa Fe update, and we thought that we would do it at the last meeting, but I wouldn't have had much to say. This one, I actually, happy to say that I've actually got a really good go-forward information for the council. So, I'm not gonna do the ancient history on this project. I'm gonna just show you what we're talking about. So, this is the map. This is the Rancho Santa Fe project. It is two phases. Phase one is the traffic interchange. Phase two is basically airway avenue connection and then the Rancho Santa Fe Parkway. And the reason why it's important to note two phases is because ADOT is, is involved in the TI, and then the rest of the project belongs to the city working with the developer. So, pretty important for everybody to, to understand that process. So, it is two phases. So, one of the things I wanted to just share with the council are recent non- So one of the things I wanted to just share with the council are recent, not way, way back accomplishments, but recent work accomplishments on the project. So we completed an IGA or an interlocal governmental agreement with ADOT and that was signed and in place in 2020. That's important because ADOT, they are, they're the ones that are responsible for overseeing the construction and bidding out the project. So that's, and, and then after the TI is in place, we definitely want an agreement about what we're responsible for on that TI and what ADOT's responsible for. So we got that accomplished back in 2020. Then of course, the council approved the development agreement with the developer in November of 2020. All of right of ways required for the TI are complete, accepted by ADOT and the Board of Transportation as required. So the TI, all the property to build the TI is in ADOT's possession now, which can be and was somewhat of a challenge. AECOM completed 95% plans for the TI. That was done July, August of this year. And we say 95%. They really have completed the plans to 100%, but until they're submitted to ADOT and approved and have final red line and corrections made, they remain at 95% until they're turned into The city received the signed development agreement and the required payment from KDP manager December, just this month. And of course, as part of that, it has all the required signatures on it. The reason why my update would have been a little shorter last council meeting, without that signed agreement, I would have stood up here and shared what I just shared with you and then said, we don't know what the go forward plan is. So now I have a go forward plan for you. So the agreement is in place. As part of the agreement, there was some utility work that needed to be done and that the project's being shared 50/50 with the developer. And so on the execution of the agreement, there was roughly $54,000 payment that was required that has been provided by the developer. So the other piece that I know that people are often curious about, and I thought I would just cover really quickly, is the financing for the project. I believe there was a recent email, but I thought I would just cover it anyway. As most of, most everybody knows, the state of Arizona Legislature committed $20 million to this project and that is for the construction of the TI. The catch in that is that we have to provide the state the proof that we have funding for the entire project for phase one and phase two. They don't want to see a TI built that doesn't go anywhere. Seems reasonable. So we have to show them proof that we have the, our, our share of the entire project to be able to qualify or to receive the 20, the $20 million. So the city in our last budget in, has appropriated $16.7 million for the TI and the Parkway as well as airway connection. Of the $16.7 million, we have 9.9 million that we are going to use reserve cash for, and then we will bond for the remaining $6.8 million. The developer as part of this is, of course, they're paying half. So they're required to provide us with an irrevocable letter of credit for their portion of the project. We expect their letter to be received January 2022. And once we receive that letter, we will then take that letter along with our information, share it with the state and ask them for the $20 million. Now, there has been a little bit of confusion about this and I, I just will take a second to clarify. This $20 million is not part of ADOT money. This was dedicated from the state legislature to the city of Kingman. And when we, when we share that with them, our portion of the project, that 20 million will come to the city. And then it'll be our responsibility, and I'll cover that in just a second. So the financing in place, we expect to have that all in place by February 2022. The 95% TI plans will be submitted to ADOT that same month. The TI plans will be reviewed and accepted by ADOT, hopefully by March 2022. It, it, their review may be a little bit longer depending on how many comments they have. The thing that we, that needs to be noted is as soon as they accept the 95% plans, they will be at a 100% plans. We will then have 30 days in which to get ADOT the money that will cover the engineering construction estimates for the TI, which means we will take the 20 million that we get from the state and we will submit that along with our money, our half of the TI and the developer's half of the TI. And that will go into escrow with ADOT and they will then award the bid for the project and we will be on our way. The TI package will be advertised, evaluated and a contract awarded May of 2022. TI construction, July 2022. Give or take a month. Could be, you know, it could be a month earlier, it could be a month later, but I mean, based on what the conversations that we've had with, with ADOT, and this seems reasonable based on what they're saying, it'll take them for bid time and review of the, the construction plans for the TI. And before I go to questions, I, I know the, the mayor, I've talked to the mayor several times about this plan and she had a comment that she wanted to add before we take questions. So mayor?
Thank you, Manager Foggan. What a wonderful report for the end of the year and the beginning of 2022. Because of the critical importance of everything you said, but especially the recent completed signing of the development agreement between the partners, I have a prepared statement that I would like to present. Basically, I am truly thrilled that KDP Manager LLC and the city of complete, and the city of Kingman have completed signing the Rancho Santa Fe Traffic Interchange Development Agreement. Though there are still a number of steps to be taken before groundbreaking occurs, this agreement is the cornerstone on which to move forward with assurance that all parties to the agreement are working together and in accord. This agreement has been made possible by the actions and advocacy of many people and organizations for many years. And as progress on the TI continues, many of these contributions will be highlighted. For now, it is simply important to thank all of those stakeholders and leaders, current and past, who have maintained ongoing support and dedication to this project and the vision it represents. We know that this infrastructure development positions our city for a promising prosperous future that leverages our important regional location and assets to advance our transportation, distribution and industrial sectors. So thank you so much, Manager Foggan, and I will return this to you.
Thank you, mayor. And that's really the end of my report. If, I'd be happy to answer questions or take comments if there are any.
Manager Foggan, I do have just.
Oh, all right. I thought you were letting me off the hook.
Question, or you can, you are the man with all the knowledge.
Oh, well, let's see.
How is inflationary dollars? How is this affecting this project?
It's really hard to tell at this point. When we were looking earlier, when we were on track to perhaps break ground in late 2020, early 2021, steel prices were through the roof. We expect there to be inflation on, of course, based on original engineering estimates that were created back in 2018 revised, I believe we did a revision in mid 2020. I, I wouldn't think that we're a long way off of engineering estimates for 2020. Our hope was that as we get through the pandemic, as the supply chain improves, that we will see a softening of the pricing for projects. We, we've done a number of projects inside the city for capital projects. We've seen increases in those, not, I wouldn't say dramatic, but we, we have built in, in our financing, we've built in some inflationary protection, but we'll see what 2022 brings us. Hopefully, we continue to see a softening of some of those really important commodities, steel, lumber.
Concrete.
Concrete, yep.
Okay, thank you.
Vice Mayor.
Go ahead.
Go ahead. I wanted to thank you for the presentation. I thought it was exactly what I was looking for, for the public. I feel like that timeline is what everybody's looking towards. I, I wanted to make a comment as well that I think that we all just need to trust the process. We have a lot of people looking at our community through social media, through media itself, and really paying attention to what Kingman's doing and what's in our future and how that will affect future development and the way that our community grows. So I wanted to thank you and a forward movement is good movement. And so I saw that in your presentation and I really appreciate that. So thank you for taking the time.
You bet. My pleasure.
Councilmember Walker.
I agree with what Councilmember Samley has said, but my only question was the 17 point, or excuse me, 16.7 million of the city's money, the 6.8 million's coming from bond and that'll be paid for through the general fund?
Uh, yes, that's correct. Yep.
That was my only question.
Yep, good question. I should have had that on there, actually.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments? Okay.
All right. Well, thank you. I appreciate the opportunity to present that. It's, it is good news, so thank you.
Okay. Item C, election calendar update. And it looks like Sir Kirk Meredith has all the answers on that.
I know about that, but I do have some information to share. So good evening. Thank you for allowing me this opportunity. With us coming up to our 2022 election cycle, I wanted to share with council and also the community some important dates that, to be mindful of. So candidate packets are now available. That started last week and we sent some stuff out, our PIO did, to let people know that if they are interested in running for office, they can now obtain those packets by appointment with the clerk's office. The first day for candidates to file their nomination petitions is March 5th. There is an asterisk by that. That is a Saturday. There is new legislation that does not allow us to move that date, so I will be taking appointments should anybody be interested in filing that day. And then the last day that those packets can be turned back into us is April 4th. There is a period for write-in candidates as well. Their first day to file as a write-in candidate is March 7th and the last day is June 23rd. County will have sample ballots available on June 30th. The last day to register to vote for the primary is July 5th. And then early voting and early, opens and early ballots will be mailed on July 6th to those that are registered for that. And the last day to request an early voting ballot from the county is July 22nd. That early voting period will end July 29th and then we have our primary election date on August 2nd. Before we go into the general election dates, I did include those, but I just wanted to remind the community that we may not necessarily have anything on the general election because we do have the opportunity for our candidates to be elected outright in the primary if they meet that threshold. So given that, should there, anybody advance for a runoff, the election dates, the last day to file as a write-in for the general is September 29th. Sample ballots for the general be, will be available October 6th. The last day to register to vote for the general is October 11th. Early voting will open and early ballots will be mailed on October 12th. The last day to request your early voting ballot will be October 28th. Early voting for the general will end on November 4th and then the general election date is November 8th. I wanted to share some general candidate information for anybody that may be interested in running for council. We, it does require that you are 18 years old and a registered voter. You have to be a resident of the city of Kingman, so living in the city limits for at least a year. And statute says it's a year preceding the election date. So they have all the way up until the election date to acquire that year of residency. And then you have to have the ability to read, write and speak English. We are doing packets by appointment with the city clerk's office. It is a lot of information and we like to make sure we go through the packet with everybody so they have a clear understanding of what the expectation is instead of just handing them a packet and letting them wing it. Additionally, this year, we have launched Equal. Equal is an online petition signature gathering system that the Secretary of State's office has created and made available to the cities. Your electronic petitions will have to be printed and submitted with candidate packets. So we will not be allowing for online submission of those. And just like any regular petition signatures, your statement of interest does have to be filed with the clerk's office before any signature collection can begin. And then just so the community is aware, the mayor, which is a two-year term and three council member seats, that our four-year terms are open for the election in 2022. I just wanted to make sure everybody knew where you could go to register to vote. You can do it with Mojave County voter registration at the county administration building. You can do it online at Service Arizona. We do have forms in our office, but you cannot file them with our office. You have to file it back with the county, but you can pick it up here if you're in, doing city business. And that is my short and sweet presentation. If anybody has any questions, I am happy to answer them at this time.
One quick question. If, if the city needs to put something on the ballot for this, what is our last day for that? When do we have to, as the city council, as the city goes, when is our last day to put anything on the ballot?
So if the city wants to have something on the ballot, then I believe March, when we do the call of election is due in March, we would have to do it at that time.
Okay, any other comments or questions? Thank you.
All right.
Sir Kirk Meredith, appreciate all the information. Okay, item D, homelessness resources.
Thank you. So something that came up and has been a question, I think Councilor Mello had asked about what we had for a follow-up on our homeless conversation and resources. And so Chief Cooper, his team has been working on this. He's, they've been part of several meetings and so I've asked Chief Cooper to share the information that we've been able to gather with regards to homeless programs and resources. Chief?
Thank you. Vice Mayor, Mayor and Council, I appreciate the opportunity. So it was on September 21st. I know Councilor Mello and Councilor Samley were having, I think at some point in this process had asked questions about this. But what started this was Deputy Chief Freed presented a department report in regards to vagrancy and homelessness and the issues of quality of life and public order crimes as a result of that and kind of what was going on. During the course of his presentation, he'd mentioned that offers, officers no longer had access to accurate or current information regards to resources that we had had some years ago. And the purpose behind that was to emphasize the point that even though my officers have the most routine, regular contact with these folks that are in need the most routine, regular contact with these folks that are in need or perhaps underserved that could benefit from this, that it ultimately wasn't a law enforcement solution, we're dealing with the symptom, but that the resources available were very fluid, and they would change over the years, and the information can get outdated. But what wasn't mentioned is that we had been working on updating that information and how we could do that. So it was asked by counsel what could be done, what was being done, and so as a result of that, on October 14th, Counsel, Counselor Samley and Deputy Chief Freed had met with a group of community partners, and that included representatives from the United Way River Cities, the Cornerstone Mission, and representatives from Southwest Behavioral. And as a result of that meeting, it was obvious that we didn't need to reinvent the wheel, that there was already good work being done by community groups that were already in place. Mayor Miles had provided information about the, the good work being done by the Mojave County Homeless Continuum of Care Group, and they were doing a lot of good work to meet the needs of the homeless. But it was found, and pretty obvious to me from the information that I got back, that everybody would, would like to have update, updated and accurate information, and the same information, so that everybody could have the same opportunities to be afforded with regards to resources that are available in our area, and it's well beyond homelessness. So as a result, we now have access to a comprehensive list of current resources locally, and that includes not just homelessness, but its employment, food, clothing, utilities, health, counseling, substance abuse, crisis intervention, domestic violence, children's services, veteran services, housing, transportation, disabilities, lots of information. And I forwarded that information to you earlier today, I asked Annie to do that, and it's, it is documents, it's paper, and you all probably know, as soon as you print it, it's outdated. So, so work is being done, not by me, but by other groups in the community, to make it electronic, to make it a, a living document, a living file that is easier to update. So it's something, but in the meantime, we do have access to that information. Every member of the police department has access to that. My officers have access to this in their cars. It's a saved, shared folder, a shared drive that they have access to through their computers, that they can have that. The officers have always been encouraged to not just be enforcers, but to be ambassadors of good whenever possible, and to try to provide this information. Not everybody wants homeless resources. Some of them are the, are the vagrant population, and they would still take advantage of others, other resources that might be offered, and we want to try to offer that as the situation allows. Not every situation is conducive to that on our end of it, but we have access to that. And it could be as simple as providing or offering a phone call, and there's been several examples over the years where that's been successful, and it's, it's, it's led to a reuniting and whatnot, so it's something that, that every officer has access to. Also, each city department has been forwarded that same information that you received earlier today, and the idea behind that is just in regards to our customer service, that everybody, especially the city, on the city team, especially call takers, those that are out in the field that have regular contact with these folks, receptionists, if they get a call and there's a need presented, there's an opportunity, we can perhaps, instead of just saying, it's not what we do, call somebody else, we could actually maybe try to help them work through the, the resource guides that we have, at least it's a, it's a, it's an option, so. We are sort of working on posting it on the city's webpage, a link connecting them to this information, but again, as soon as it's printed, it can be outdated, so that's still a problem that's being looked at, and we're, we're, we're dealing with that, so. Any questions? So I appreciate the opportunity to share with you and the questions and concerns. It's also an opportunity to share with the community at this time as well, so I would welcome any questions.
Chief Cooper, thanks for being here tonight, and I think you said the key words, it's, it's constantly changing, it's a fluid situation, and that's, I think we always need to remember that, that as one resource dries up, hopefully another resource steps in and, and becomes available. So, any comments or questions from council?
Vice Mayor.
Yes.
Thank you so much. I was looking forward to this. It was early on that we kind of discovered less is more. There's already a big group working on this, and, and I want to give kudos to all those involved in that group, because it is massive, and they, they are effective in, in what they're doing, so I'm, I'm glad to know that we're more involved as a city in getting the information back to us, and I'm also really glad to know that the officers have access to that document and can utilize it when needed. So I really thank you for the update, and I, I want to thank the Mojave County Continuum of Care-
Yes.
-for all the work that they're doing to help our great city, so, thank you.
I would add that other groups have also expressed interest in this same information. The Chamber of Commerce does want access to it as well, so it's encouraging to me to, that we've identified a need that would help, and that everybody wants access to the same information, so it's a good thing, so, thank you.
Thank you for your presentation. My question is, is if we were to budget some money in this next cycle, a few thousand dollars, would the police department or the fire department be able to use funds in emergency type situations for, like a hotel voucher? So if it's late at night, you can't get ahold of any of those resources, could you use vouchers to help put people, you know, in shelter that night, or to help people who are truly stuck and trying to get somewhere, to get them a bus ticket, you know, and I don't mean busing people out here, I just mean, people get stuck here, they break down, or they just don't have the money, and they really do have family somewhere. Would that be helpful, or would that be just doing work that someone else is doing?
Some, yeah, some years ago, it was quite a few years ago, we had a good SAM project, it was funded by community donations, and it was determined eventually that it, it was better suited to have that monitored or managed somewhere else, and so that would be a city question, but my suggestion would be it would be better managed by another group, and that we would be able to access that or ask them, but they would be putting the regulations and the rules and regulations in place and monitor those monies, but I don't know if that's a city manager question as well.
Yeah, I'd agree with the chief a hundred percent. The, the opportunity to misuse funds and be accused of picking and choosing, I, I, I really think that when you see these programs, you see them administered by nonprofits because of this exact, because of what we're talking about, and-
So then I'm wondering if maybe we shouldn't contribute in some way to those nonprofits as a city, you know, the way we do like the Katherine Heinrich Center. You know, it was alarming this last week when Cornerstone Mission shut down, and you realize how vulnerable our system is, and that when, when the shelter closes, that's it, there isn't anything else, you know, and there wasn't, a lot of people had to work really fast to help, and I just, I would almost like to see the city just do a little bit more to help that system and, and to maybe make it stronger.
We do support some of those cap houses, one, as well as a few others, and public safety wouldn't be the, the entity to monitor those funds, because it's very subjective, and that's, that would be the danger for the city to be involved in. There is a certain subjectivity to it, and it's not something that we would want to be really close to.
Any other comments or questions?
Vice Mayor, I do.
Yes.
For the chief, let's say it is middle of the night, and there's a house burns down. I mean, who, who is the first one you guys see or the fire department sees? Is Red Cross out there that night?
So they do, fire department has access to-
Okay.
-resources, I don't know if it's just Red Cross, but there are things that happen immediately.
They have people that get out there that night.
But again, it's contacting another entity, and then they make the choices and the decisions, but, correct. And it would, that's a good point, it'd be something similar to that. Whatever we would support, it would be something similar to-
Okay.
-what they have access to.
All right, thank you.
Okay. Well, thanks for all the comments and discussion on this. Chief, once again, thanks for that report.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. Can we switch things around six and seven? Can we put seven first? Request for-
Yes, sir.
Counsel requests for future reports and updates.
I have nothing.
Counselwoman Nelson, you have nothing, okay. Actually, I have something, just, it was making me think about it when we were talking about the Rancho Santa Fe update. Have we recently had a Kingman Crossing update? Is that something we can sort of get an idea of what's going on with that one?
Sure, I can give you the minute update next time we meet.
Okay, that would be great. Thank you, Manager Foggan. Okay, announcements by mayor, council members, and city manager. City manager?
Merry Christmas. I don't have anything.
Thank you, Manager Foggan. Counsel, Councilman Walker?
Just want to wish everyone a Merry Christmas, a Happy New Year, and we'll see everybody next year.
Okay, thank you. Councilwoman Samley?
I do want to wish everyone a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year, but I also wanted to talk, I wanted to talk water for a second. By the way, Merry Christmas and Happy New Year, because I didn't have my mic on. I was invited last week to attend the Business for Water Stewardship reception down in the valley, and got a chance to talk to Representative Cobb about two water bills that are going, that she's going to be proposing. I know Mayor Miles works tirelessly on water, and I was happy to be representing the city of Kingman. I did travel down with Becky Fawson with the Chamber of Commerce, and we got to talk a lot about Kingman to a lot of people and, that are very interested in our area, and we also got to talk about water, so I was very intrigued, and I was happy to be invited, and I, I know that you are missed, Mayor Miles.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for being there. And Becky.
Councilwoman Saly?
Merry Christmas, Becky.
Thank you. Councilwoman Mello?
Ditto. Merry Christmas and Happy New Year.
Counselwoman Nelson?
The same. Thank you. Everybody have safe and happy holidays.
I would like also to wish everybody a Merry Christmas and Happy New Years, and be careful in your travels, and be safe, and once again, even echo again what I said last meeting, is strive to be a little more considerate, maybe, maybe this time of year. And I, as, once again, I point my, my fingers at myself, I'm the one that needs to work on that. So, lastly, Mayor Miles?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I just wanted to mention that I did attend by Zoom the Greater Arizona Mayors Association last Friday, and the subject was redistricting. I just want everyone to be aware that, that the independent redistricting commission, which we had presented council some meetings ago, we're having what they call their final decision making, making meeting today, and while I had it streaming, I don't, I got onto something else, and I don't know the results, but those will be forthcoming, and I'm sure we'll all be interested in seeing how that finalizes. So I just wanted to mention that the Gamma could not make a vote in favor or against to advocate, because it was a special meeting, and it had, it did not have adequate time posted, so that's it. And I join everyone in saying Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, stay safe, stay well, and just enjoy the blessings of the season.
Thank you, Mayor Miles, and of course, we, we miss you here in chambers, and, and we wish you to continue to get better.
Thank you. On my way.
Without any comments and anything else, can I have a motion for adjournment?
I'll make that motion.
A second?
A second.
We're all adjourned. Thank you.
Bye.
Bye. Bye.